Good afternoon. We have new microphones. Oh, yes, there, I hear it's working. Good afternoon, good afternoon. Beautiful day. We're going to jump right in and call to order and roll call, please.
President Kesselman.
Here.
Chair Dineinger.
Here.
Trustee Schofer.
Here.
Trustee Chaconi.
Here.
Trustee Taggart Davis.
Here.
Trustee Dolce.
Here.
Trustee Jacobson.
Yes.
Trustee Worthington.
Here.
Trustee Davis.
Here.
All right. Nice to look out and see you all here. And we're in the midst of, it's hard to believe, it's already the middle of July. It's going way too fast, I don't know about for all of you. I'm going to echo something that Ray brought up this morning at Buildings and Grounds, and that is, and it's the same thing I said when I was here in May. I walked onto the campus today, and I'm just blown away by how beautiful it looks in the middle of a hot summer. The flowers are gorgeous. Everywhere I look, there's something nice to look at. And I just want to say that and thank everybody who's responsible for it, and also say, enjoy. Let's go right to the President's Report. Dr. Kesselman.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here today. We have a special presentation to make today, and I noticed that the individual with whom, I hope there are two individuals with whom will receive this special presentation, but let me provide a little background information. This past May, Stockton, as many of you learned through various media outlets, hosted the 2018 United States Police K-9 Association National Detector Dog Trials. That's the longest title I've ever heard, but where more than, this is what's really impressive, 100 teams from 11 states and a team from Mexico competed in this year's event. The event featured participants from various agencies such as the FBI, the CIA, New York and New Jersey Police Departments, and showcased the best of the best in the Police K-9 Association. For this year's competition, our very own Sergeant Tracy Stewart and her K-9 partner, Hemi, who I know since Hemi's the little pup for a reason I don't want to talk about today, placed first in package searches, first in vehicle searches, and were named the 2018 National Explosives Detection Team Champions. Let's watch a short video of Sergeant Stewart as she shares her experience with Hemi and the competition.
I love my job. I do. It's, uh, it can be challenging like anything else, but challenge is good. Even moreover, I'm so proud to say that I'm Hemi's handler. What a great boy. I'm blessed. I'm very blessed. I'm very fortunate. Again, I take my job very seriously as far as protecting, serving, and educating. And having an asset such as a canine, let alone Hemi most specifically, love my boy, it really can't be expressed in words. Listen, he doesn't give lectures, right? He doesn't do traffic stops. He's always happy, happy, happy. You know, he's kind of like a Stockton icon. He's kind of a constant. And even though, again, we work shift work, so technically, we're not always here, it seems like we are. So he's a constant here. And they love him. Hemi is essentially like celebrity status here. It's like winning the Olympics on a canine level. Detector trials, it's the United States Police K-9 Association National Detector Dog Trials for 2018. It's an annual event. And it consisted of explosive detection dogs, narcotics dogs, and a cadaver dog. So in the explosives portion of the competition, it consisted of four tests. The first one was an odor recognition test. The next one was packages, it's a package search. Everything is timed. Then there's vehicle searches and room searches. So we placed first in vehicle searches. Overall, and time-wise, we blew it away at a minute, minute and a couple of seconds. And although we had some fierce competition, God bless them, they did fantastic, I think the next best time was almost three minutes. So we really tore it up there. I was very proud, proud mama. And then we placed first in packages. So we did get 100 percent score in the room searches, but our time was a little bit slower, so we placed fourth. So overall, very proud, like I said, and at the end, overall results, he took first place. He's the top dog. It's all fun for him, so he knows in the end, he's going to get some type of verbal praise, or food, or a toy, and he loves it. When you work hard and you put your mind to something and apply that, you can achieve anything. So I've got what is now a nine-year-old dog, he just turned nine, and we were up against some of the fiercest dogs at much younger ages. And he blew it away. He's top dog. So absolutely, this old dog has learned a lot of new tricks, so he's at the top of his game. I've got no complaints.
Sergeant Stewart, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the entire Stockton community, we thank you and appreciate your efforts in keeping our community safe, and I could not be more proud to have you and Hemi as part of the Stockton family. Will you please come up to be recognized for this outstanding achievement? And since Hemi and I are about the same age, I feel like a kindred spirit. Okay?
and your leadership and commitment to Stockton University, and this is something that's given to the champion every single year. This is on behalf of that.
No, it goes from, it goes to you.
To me? You're giving this to me? There you go. Remember, this is not a Second Amendment issue.
And so, the reality is that, on behalf of the United States Police K-9 Association, and for me myself as the national chairperson for this particular event, we just wanted to present this to President Kesselman with deepest thanks and appreciation for allowing us to hold this competition on this campus. It was just tremendous reviews from all competitors, trainers, people from out-of-state, local. It's just an amazing, amazing venue, and we thank you so much for your commitment to us and the faith that you had in us and having us.
You make all of us, you and Hemi and the entire police department make all of us. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
That's your negotiation.
That concludes my presentation at this time.
That was fun. I got a little worried there for a minute because he was like nosing in the trash can over there, maybe the recycling. So on to committee reports. Let's start with Academic Affairs and Planning Committee Report, Trustee Andy Dolce.
Good afternoon, all. We have a couple of items. One, authorization. We need a resolution, and then we have some information items. I'll cover the resolution. We need a resolution, I'm making a resolution, authorization to accept an award from the New Jersey Department of Children and Families for the Child Welfare Education Institute, and to certify the accuracy of the contract commitments. This is a award in the amount of $2,200,000, so it's pretty significant amount. Congratulations, congratulations to all of you that participate and help administer this particular program. So you have a resolution on the floor?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
We have to take a little vote here. Trustee Dineinger.
Yes.
Trustee Schofer.
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson.
Yes.
Trustee Worthington.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
May I just say one thing about that? Dawn, are you here? Dawn Conrady, are you here? Well, let her know that we shouted her out. She's overseen this program for a number of years, and she's done so with extraordinary, it's a cast of a number of people, but she has led this effort, and she's done a phenomenal job. A warm round of applause for Dawn, okay?
So I'd like to call on our esteemed Provost, Lori, to bring us up to date on some program activity.
Thank you, Trustee Dolce. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm happy to give you some information about some new academic programs that we have that will begin in the fall of 2018. First, we have a minor in Cannabis Studies, one of the few in the nation, so we're very excited about that one. A minor in Migration Studies, again, very timely topic, and one of the few in the nation. We have a new concentration in Business Analytics in the Business Studies Baccalaureate Program, concentration in International Affairs in the Political Science Baccalaureate Program, as well as a Bachelor of Arts in Liberal Studies, concentration in Community Leadership and Civic Engagement. Very excited about that one. That will be based mainly in Atlantic City. So I'm just very happy to bring those information items to your attention. And many thanks to all of those who worked hard to develop these new programs.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you all for the hard work you're doing during the summertime. I know there's a lot of other programs in development of one stage or another, and most of them are very timely, meet the needs of our students, so congratulations to all of you for the work you do during the summertime to develop these programs. End of my report. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. On to Student Affairs Committee Report, Trustee Meg Worthington.
I'd like to call you up, Mr. Ketchings, to speak, give an update.
Good afternoon, everyone. So we, our committee didn't meet this for our July board meeting, but certainly a lot of great work happening in our division, and we're looking forward to beginning the new year, as we prepare for our students to come to Atlantic City and a lot of other things, exciting things forthcoming, so please stay tuned to all the things that we're going to be doing.
Okay. We're, move on to the Finance and Professional Services Committee Report. Trustee Stan Ellis isn't here today, but sitting in for him is Trustee Ray Chaconi.
Well, thank you. It's hard to fill his shoes with this, so I'm going to do the next best thing and call up Michael Angulo, Chief Financial Officer, to help me out.
Thank you, Trustee Chaconi. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Dineiger, President Kesselman, trustees. My update is on the Finance and Professional Services Committee, which met earlier this morning. There are a number of items on there that were pre-authorized by the Executive Committee at its June 25th meeting. The first resolution dealt with the academic term fees effective for FY '19. There were two notable items. Number one, the transportation and safety fee increase from $110 to $120. There were two new academic fees that were added. They are related to the nursing program. The other resolutions dealt with the remaining tuition and fees for FY '19, which reflected a 2.5 percent increase from the prior year. There is one new community-related program, and that is the Criminal Justice and Law Enforcement Employees for Master's Degree and Graduate Certificate in Criminal Justice Program, so that is something that we're very much looking forward to implementing as well. There was an approval, the resolution authorizing the approval and withdrawal of funds from the university's investment account. This was a withdrawal of $12.7 million, which was intended, is intended to replenish the funds that were set aside for AC Capital, Atlantic City capital expenses, but had been expended for other capital expenditures during FY '18. Another, other items on the Executive Committee's pre-authorization list included the bid waiver contract for Comcast of South Jersey. This was for $250,000 and for three years for Atlantic City Cable Service for the Atlantic City campus. There was a bid, an increase in a bid waiver for Ruffalo Noah Levitz. That was for $335,000, a one-year bid waiver related to enrollment management services. These additional items were considered and approved by the committee this morning for inclusion in the consent agenda. There were bid waiver contracts for Panonian Associates for $137,660 for engineering services, Saul Ewing LLP, $90,000 for legal services, university and student services for $54,000 for move-in services for freshmen on move-in day. College Entrance Exam Board, $63,000. That was for enrollment management services. Atlantic City Municipal Utilities Authority for $600,000. That is a three-year bid waiver, and it's for the supply of water for Atlantic City properties. The Atlantic City Sewerage Company, that's for $307,000. That's a one-year waiver for sewerage services, again, for Atlantic City properties. The Willis of New Jersey bid waiver for $850,000. That is a one-year waiver contract, and that's to provide commercial general liability and property insurance for Atlantic City. There were increased bid waiver contracts as well. Atlantic City Electric received a $700,000 increase. That is for a two-year period. That is to provide electricity service for Atlantic City campus. South Jersey Gas was $300,000. That is for a two-year period to provide gas service to our Atlantic City campus. There was a contract, an increase in bid waiver for Hobson's Inc. of $56,070. That is for a one-year extension, and again, that is for enrollment management. It allows us to access the very important Naviance platform for recruiting of students. The Rogers Group received a $75,000 bid waiver increase, and that's a one-year contract to provide marketing advancement of the Public Safety and Security Program. It's a continuing education program that we maintain here. The Atlantic County Utilities Authority received a $45,000 bid waiver increase as well. That's a one-year extension for trash and recycling services for the Atlantic City campus. Another item that was considered by the committee this morning is the proposed FY '19 operating and capital budget adoption. As you all know or familiar with, that's the annual budget book. This year's is about 250 pages, and it is available on Blackboard for all of you to review and peruse. There was a resolution for governmental affairs contract. There was an RFP in which we were awarded governmental affairs to CLB Partners for $5,000 a month. There was the appointment of a board member, resolution for Stockton Aviation, I mean, Stockton Affiliated Services, SASE, where our student representative, who is nominated, nominated is Damian Majewski, and he will be serving on the SASE Board of Directors for a two-year term. Finally, there was a revised resolution for the FY '19 meal plan, and the meal plan rates had previously been approved during the prior board meeting, and it, you know, the changes made to it reflect only two minor items. The removal of the reference to Seaview, because we all know Seaview is being sold, and then there was an update on the Residential Advisory Advisor Plan, which reflected an annual rate versus a per semester rate. So thank you, and I turn this back to the Board for action on the consent agenda.
Point of order, Chair. Resolutions on pages 26 and 28 have to be broken out. There are some matters on that I can't vote for.
That's right.
And in fact, I might add that bid waiver resolutions should not be, really shouldn't be part of the consent agenda.
So let's break them out separately then, okay? Go ahead.
Okay, so if we do, let's see, if we do everything but the bid waivers, is that what you're saying, Trustee Jacobson?
There are three bid waivers. I'm only talking about two of them.
Okay, so we'll do a consent agenda for all of the resolutions except for the bid waivers. Start with that.
Okay.
Yeah, with, except the bid waivers. So go ahead.
Yep. All right, so.
Okay, so that would be for the academic term fees, the academic term tuition, and summer session tuition, tuition rates for Atlantic Care MBA, Atlantic Care MSN, Atlantic Care RN to BSN, Community Medical Center RN to BSN, the tuition rates for Meridian Healthcare, the tuition rates for the Criminal Justice Program, the approval and authorization of the withdrawal of funds from the university investment account, the proposed FY '19 operating and capital budget, the FY '19 government affairs contract, the appointment of the SASE member, and the FY '19 meal plan rates.
Yes.
Okay, so we could need a motion then, so.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion questions?
Trustee Dineiger.
Yes.
Trustee Schofer.
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Taggart Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson.
Yes.
Trustee Worthington.
Yes.
And Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll do, we could do it one by one?
One by one, please.
Okay, so the bid waiver contract that was pre-approved at the Executive Committee meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Hold on a second. Which one are we talking about?
This is the.
Since we're not numbered, we have.
Yes, that's true. Yep.
Michael, why don't you tell us which one you have a conflict now or an abstention on?
Resolutions on pages 26 and 28.
And can you name, is there only one on 26 and 28?
We can just go.
I'll tell you what.
Go ahead.
26 and 28, I have to recuse because of our law firm's representation of the Atlantic City Municipal Utilities Authority and the 1128.
Okay.
I cannot vote for Atlantic City Electric or South Jersey Gas. Other than that.
Okay, let's vote on everything except those two, if we could, okay? Let's start with, except for those three.
Okay, so we'll start with the bid waiver contract for Comcast, okay? So if we can have a motion to approve the bid waiver for Comcast.
Second.
Trustee Dineiger.
Yes.
Trustee Schofer.
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Taggart Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson.
Yes.
Trustee Worthington.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is the increase in bid waiver contracts for Ruffalo Noah Levitz.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Okay, Trustee Dineiger.
Yes.
Trustee Schofer.
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Taggart Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson.
Well, I'm a little confused, but sorry.
So this is only for, it's an ink, I'm sorry?
What page number?
I am on page 25, but I'm not sure that it.
It consists the same book I have?
That's what I, I believe so, so it's ink, increase in bid waiver contract.
Yes, on that.
Okay, and Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Okay, now we are on page 26, and we have the bid waiver contracts that were not pre-approved in the Executive Committee. So these are Panoni and College Board, and this one has the Atlantic City Municipal Authority and Sewerage Company and Willis of New Jersey. Okay, you with us on that one?
Yes.
Okay. We have a resolution for that?
Yes.
A second?
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Dineiger.
Yes.
Trustee Schofer.
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Taggart Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson.
Yes, as to all of the entities except the Atlantic City Municipal Utilities Authority, the LCHI and other entities.
Trustee Worthington.
Yes.
And Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Okay, then the last one is an increase in bid waivers, which includes Atlantic City Electric, South Jersey Gas, Hobson's, Rogers Group, and Atlantic County Utilities Authority.
So moved.
Move the resolution, second.
Trustee Dineiger.
Yes.
Trustee Schofer.
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi.
Yes.
Trustee Taggart Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Dolce.
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson.
Except for Atlantic City Electric and South Jersey Gas, yes.
Trustee Worthington.
Yes.
And Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Good. Let me just say a few words about that, because we talked a lot about it. First of all, Michael, we're all very impressed with your prestigious clients that you have there.
I was thinking that, too.
Very, very good, yes. But, but let me say one thing. The Finance Department of this university deserves a whole world of credit on keeping so many of the expenses low, keeping the tuition increase, you know, at 2.5 percent, and just keeping an eye on everything. And through everything we just talked about, there was a lot of work that went into that. That's one. Two, and the most important bid waiver of all of them, in case you didn't know, was the Comcast one. Because of that one, all of the new students in our new Atlantic City campus will enjoy wireless internet, cable TV, they'll have all the channels that they have here on the campus, and they negotiated that contract very well. So thank you, and this concludes our report.
Oh, no, don't we have, do we have two more, or did we take, we took care of those, yes, okay, good, good.
I just have one comment to add, and it's important because I want to first commend the entire institution for working hard to ensure that we only have, and I wish it, you know, you don't want any tuition increase, but that we kept it at 2.5 percent. As you recall, that was contingent, and we talked about this in the last board meeting, for our ability to restore the 305 state-funded positions, and of course, as everyone knows, we were successful in doing so. But I also want to commend Jim Rotler and some of the other folks, and Steve Rodwansky and his groups, because they also kept the housing and meal plan charges less than 2.5 percent. I think some were no increases whatsoever, some were 1 percent increase. So if you talk about the entire cost of living, it really is closer to 2 percent. That does not, however, deobligate the state of New Jersey to put forth an equitable funding plan, and we will do everything we can over the next one, two, three, four years to ensure that that takes place. On the positive front, as it pertains to that, there are a number of legislators in New Jersey who are open to that possibility, which is the first time I've ever heard it. A piece of legislation establishing a task force on higher education funding equity has been sponsored by Thomas Kane Jr., and we do know that both sides of the aisle are paying attention to that issue, if you look at K-312 funding. This is critical for Stockton, because we have been underfunded from the commencement, the first commencement of Stockton, from our beginning, and that is simply not going to continue forever. We need to be acknowledged for what we've done for this portion of the state. We are committed to the renaissance of Southern New Jersey. We have said this over and over again. We have put forth an incredible effort to help support Atlantic City, Atlantic County, Southern New Jersey, and the state of New Jersey can't just look at North Jersey. It is about South Jersey, and is particularly about Southeast New Jersey. So I just want to put forth that pledge to you, that the 305 lines, great, I'm thrilled, but we need to also look at the direct appropriation to the institution. I don't want to say much more on that, but I just want you all to know that we are fighting for that, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you. Moving on to the Audit Committee Report, Trustee Ray Chaconi.
Okay, thank you very much. We're right smack in the start off of our external audit that we have once a year. Our external auditors, Grant Thornton, are auditing the financial statements of the college. This is the actual financial statements of what occurred throughout the year. They're also doing the individual components of the college, the foundation, SASE, and so forth. So my condolences to the Finance Committee for being bombarded with auditors and external. In addition to that, our Internal Audit Division is just wrapping up their internal audit of succession planning. This is the first time that's really been looked at very, very carefully in a number of years. Right after that, they're going to continue with risk management. Risk management is huge at this institution. It's not just risk of money, it's risk of everything, risk of students, risk of faculty, risk of building, I mean, there's, everywhere you turn, there's a risk here. So that's a very important audit that we're looking forward to. And then finally, we're going to conclude the internal audit year with an audit of the ADA compliance here at the college. So we really have our hands full with audits for the rest of the year, and we look forward to the results and filling everyone in on those. Thank you, that concludes.
Thanks so much. So interesting about the risk management. Ray and I, we attended the AGB Association of Governing Boards National Meeting and went to, I thought it might be a snooze fest, and it wasn't, a fascinating symposium on risk management, and it was really interesting, so thank you for mentioning that. Next, Buildings and Grounds Committee Report, Trustee Leo Schofer.
Thank you, Matty. Happy summer, everybody. It's a, it's an ex-
It's a, it's an exciting time to be a member of the, of the Building and Grounds Committee, a lot going on, as you know. Today, we had a meeting this morning, we saw 67 slides of everything that's going on here on campus and in Atlantic City. So I'd like to call on our vice president of Facilities and Operations, Don Hudson, to continue the report.
Thank you for counting the slides. Am I up and running? Okay. Like you were told, that we have a robust meeting again, and I get into all the details of significant amounts of projects, this is just a quick summary of what we're doing. We go through AC and Galloway specifically. We always start with Atlantic City, and that's an image as of last week, and just, just a couple shots, brand new, you can start seeing some of the site areas clearing, getting ready for landscaping, and, yeah, the accesses to the main entrances of the building, sidewalks wrapping the building, and here's a little video. So we're planning on being done, thank you. We're planning on being done soon. So you can see, this actually, this was actually, most of this video is taken about a week ago, and for those who have toured in the last couple of days, huge amounts of progress are made every day. The job is loaded, meaning that all the major trades are on-site, they're at capacity on the workability of the sites, but areas like where you saw coverings over carpet, they're actually being now exposed. The bedroom furniture, Steve knows this, started coming in last week, mattresses, I think tomorrow, or, yeah, mattresses, classroom furniture next week, office furniture the week after. By August 1st, all the furniture should be in, and starting to be separated and distributed. Deep cleaning is actually occurring in all the residents, from the fifth floor down, in that order. All the major components, the kitchen area, the police substation, the apartments, the office suites, the classrooms, the event room, the bathrooms, and of course, the fitness room. There you go. All operational and ready for the fall semester. Just, we still have a lot to do, we have a good solid six weeks left. What does that mean? I did something, did I?
No, you're good.
Okay, good. So you're going to see a lot of people moving around a lot, back and forth in Atlantic City, but thanks to everybody, you know that just everybody here has touched parts of this building, and a big thanks, since there was a good, a lot of credit to finance, they had to move that hundred, you know, million, $180 million in and out, in and out, and we're at like, in the last 10, 20% of paying off the, the cost of the construction, so thanks to all of the hard work they've been doing with all the procurements, and don't forget, the whole job is loaded now with operations. Again, heavy feet, getting all of that on the ground, and now we're all staffing up and getting ready for it, so thank you. Now, nice transition, did you notice that? Look, Atlantic City, Galloway, green. So now we talk about the Atlantic City, Galloway projects. We have over 35 projects going on in this campus right now. A lot of things are infrastructural and utility-type projects, but I'm going to talk about just a couple. I'm going to tell you about the third floor, the Health Science Center, the parking lot, but other things that you're not going to see here are Housing 1, significant amount of renovations for the bathrooms, the water, hot water heaters, roofing work this summer, the USC chiller was replaced this year, and it's a lot of underground utility over near Big Blue. The one project I want to explain to you that where we are, and this is, you've been with us the last couple of years, the Quad Project, the third floor of the Health Sciences Center, has been renovated and just about at the final stages of construction, actually, they're laying carpet now, this is actually a couple of weeks old too, furniture very soon, this will be open and operational as August will be moving, transitioning everything from the main campus F-Wing and West Quad over to the Health Sciences Center on that third floor, so that'll be ready. A bunch of parking initiatives, you've seen a lot of changes that are occurring, a lot of logistics, but I want to talk about the, one major addition over on the Northern Athletic Complex. You know that we've been showing this over the last couple of years, we did Sections A and B two years ago, and this year is 8C, and this is the area of concentration that we have been working on. If you've been out in that area, it is just about ready to go. They're rolling, the light fixtures are being installed, it's going to be adding 350 more additional spaces close to the proximity of the shuttle stop, includes a stormwater management program, but again, right on budget, and it will be ready for the fall semester. Little space management project of, of the huge amounts of work we have ahead of us for the backfill of all of the space that was moved out of the core, we are actually happy to report that there's eight or 12 major program spaces, academic spaces, that we're converting now. Half of the work is being done in-house with our own crew, the other half was, was designed and bid out, and this work in F-Wing, B-Wing, and C-Wing will also be ready for the fall semester. For those who have cell phones, you will notice that we will be fully operational by, hopefully by the end of the month. Verizon, 18, thank you. I appreciate that, Ray. So you've seen the towers, and I can just tell you that Scott or Bob can actually comment more in detail, please find them after the meeting, to ask them when your cell service will be added, because I think Verizon is the lead dog right now, so they'd be happy to talk to you. And then one last commercial, as we're doing all of Atlantic City, and we're doing construction, we're trying to take care of everybody, but a significant amount of work streamlined by faculty and students, as we ended the school year, we have a biodiversity committee that helps streamline specific work. You saw that we're still doing the pine needle mulch campaign, that is, that's faculty-driven in cooperation with physical plant, control burns in the forestry, native plantings. Two projects that came out of the student and faculty involvement were beach replenishment over near Housing 1, and also hiking trail project, two very successful projects we're proud of, and the students and the faculty really drove, drove those home for us, so we love partnering with them. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. I'd just like to say that we had an opportunity to, to tour the Atlantic City facilities yesterday, and they met with all the expectations that we had for them at the beginning of the project, and that's a wonderful thing to be able to say at this point. I'd also like to note that with all of the attention being given to the opening in Atlantic City, that we haven't forgotten the mothership, and it's important that we continue to focus on, on renovations and maintenance here in Galloway, and I want to credit the Facilities Department for staying on top of that and not losing focus on everything that needs to be done here in Galloway, while so much attention is being given to Atlantic City. I also learned this morning that during the summer, that many of the staff of Don's department have deferred vacations and time off during the summer to make sure that everything that's going on now gets done on time, and I'd like to thank you and the members of your department for doing that, to make sure that we were on schedule and are on schedule for Atlantic City. And that concludes our report.
And, thank you, thank you, Leo. I can, it's almost incomprehensible, the number of projects that Facilities is undertaking in a summer, absolutely incomprehensible. Any one or two would have been a robust summer 10, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, but to build a brand-new campus, as well as 37 significant projects on this campus, is a testament to incredible energy and enthusiasm and work, you know, work ethic, and you all, you and your entire staff, and all the support people, IT, everyone who works with you, really deserve a warm round of applause from every single individual. Thank you.
And that's after you impressed us last summer, as you recall, with an equal number of heavy projects, so please pass along our thanks. Next up, Development Committee report, trustee Jacobson.
Madam Chair, the Development Committee did not meet this cycle, and therefore I have nothing to report, but the weather tomorrow will be.
Thank you. Investment Committee report, trustee Ellis is not here, so trustee Ray will, Chaconi will take on.
Hello again. The Investment Committee met on April the 2nd, excuse me, April 30th, and we reported back to the full board on May 2nd. As of June 30th, our investment account had just about $78 million into it. As you know, we have the fund between two managers, one manager has about 25% of the money, the other one about 75%. The, the one that, that holds about 25% returned just over 5%, and the one holding about 75% returned about 6 and 1/4, so they were very good, considering there was some volatility in the markets and so forth, so the fund is growing, we're watching it very, very carefully, and I think it's in good hands, and that concludes our report.
That's great, thank you very much. Onto University Policy Review First Reading, Dr. Kesselman.
Yeah, item number seven, folks, and it begins on page 36 in, in your materials, and there are 27 policy changes. If you recall, we undertook this process several months ago, and we're going to go through a series of updating revisions, clarifications, most of the changes are cosmetic, they're very minor, they're changing names of departments and reporting structures and the like, and I want to thank Susan and, and the folks, and Lita and Shalan, and whoever worked on pulling together these policy changes by first identifying the summary of key changes before each of the 27 policies, and then the, the new policy itself. As you recall, the Board of Trustees approves policies, the Office of President approves procedures, and the policy process results in a first reading today, and then a second reading is when it's approved. So I ask that the Board approve these, the resolution, oh, no, this is information, all right? I don't ask that you do that, then, I retract that.
We're informed, we're informed.
You're informed.
We're informed. Wow.
Whoa, phone call on my watch, crazy.
I like that, talking watch.
All right, we do have an action item coming up, and that Personnel Actions Resolution, and I just want to make special note that, believe it or not, at this time of year, we're now in the new fiscal year, and Dr. Kesselman is in the last year of his three-year contract, and according to that contract, this is the time of year where we all get together and we talk about extending the contract, so we will be voting to extend a three-year contract. We are very grateful, when I think back to three years ago, I gulp, and my palms start to sweat, and how grateful we were to you and to your wife Lynn for staying here, deciding to stay here, and what a three years it has been. My colleagues here on the board, so grateful for all of you, many of you were here for those high tides, big waves, and some of you are new, and we're so grateful, you're not that new anymore, but we're really grateful for your help. So I just wanted to point that out, and we'll be voting on that when we do this personnel resolution, and thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
So we need a motion?
A motion.
Make a motion.
I'll make that.
Second.
Okay, and any comments, questions?
Trustee Dienger?
Yes.
Trustee Schofer?
Yes.
Trustee Chaconi?
Yes.
Trustee Taggart Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Dolce?
Yes.
Trustee Jacobson?
Yes.
And trustee Worthington?
Yes.
Let me, let me just address that first. Thank you, Board, and thank you to staff, faculty and staff of the university, they've been extremely supportive. I think it's really important to understand, this contract will, will, will take us through '21, '22. '21, '22 will be perhaps the most historic year at the institution, in that it will be its 50th anniversary, and simultaneous to that, we will be going through a Middle States site visit. This will, one of the things we've been talking about, and I've been talking about, and we began a process, and I think trustee Chaconi mentioned it, of succession planning, and how do we ensure that the institution's health and vitality in the future are, are never threatened irrespective of who's in the position of leadership? So each and every one of us in senior cabinet-level folks have gone through that process of analyzing our areas and deciding how that succession would run. I, I, I'm not going to be here forever, you need to know that, okay? So you, you need to know that, and, and the most important thing you need to also know, this isn't, and I'm, you know, this is probably my last multi-year. It's not that I, I don't want, you know, there's a certain point where it needs a change, and I just want you to know that, and it doesn't mean that I'm going to be gone at the end of '21, '22, and do not test that I'm a lame duck, that is not the case, okay? But it does mean that we need to begin as an institution to think about long-term, following my presidency, but I definitely want us to get through that 50th, obviously, in the next Middle State, and then we take it year to year, okay? So thank you all for everything you do for us every single day, and I really mean that very much. Thank you. And no retirement party this time, we already had that.
How does this saying go, four more years? Four more years.
And it's pretty remarkable, how many, how many universities can say that their president, while celebrating the 50th anniversary, also was here for that many years? That's really remarkable. Also, I just want to, you know, tip of the hat to all the other Personnel Actions that we made today, so just happy to, to have you here, if you're joining us, or if you're changing, very happy about that. All right, on to other business. Do we have other business?
No new hires? No new hires? Oh.
It's okay if we don't have new business. Oh, no, yeah, go for it. Good afternoon, knowing the only thing standing between you and the doors now, I'll make this really quickly, please join me in welcoming Janet Greco to the Stockton University family. This is always a wonderful time when we get to welcome somebody new, and I had promised that I was going to take her on this walking tour, and she was going to meet all these fantastic people, and then, you know, stuff happened. And so, we've been, it's been a busy couple of weeks for her, so the fact that I haven't gotten around to bring her to see some of you yet just means that we've been keeping her busy. So I'm going to do that soon, but Janet, would you please stand up so we can say welcome? I got to say, the understatement of the, of the century is probably "stuff happens."
If I may, this past June, Athletics conducted a really competitive search, and I'm most pleased to say that that search yielded Devon Jefferson as our new women's basketball coach. In five years at her previous position as the Associate Head Coach at Fairleigh Dickinson University, Devon helped the program achieve a record number of wins, as well as register a 100 percent graduation rate for her players.
Good for you.
Prior to after you, Devon was the Assistant Coach at the University of Vermont, and had earlier coaching stints at Bloomfield College and Scotch Plains Fanwood High School. Aside from her courtside experience, Devon had already committed herself to becoming a head coach by participating in the intensive NCAA Achieving Coaching Excellence Program, as well as the prestigious Alliance for Women Coaching Academy. As a student-athlete, Devon excelled at Seton Hall University, where she played in the Big East Conference and competed against some of the best players in the country. She's a proud New Jersey native, and now we are thrilled that she's bringing her talents, along with her career and educational experiences, to Stockton University, so please welcome new head women's basketball coach, Devon Jefferson.
Hi. I would like to, you all to welcome the new Assistant Dean of Arhue, Rosa Perez Maldonado, who comes from us, from Columbia University's Mailman School of Public Health. She started about 6, 10, I don't know, she started after graduation. So if you haven't met her, say hello. She's already having an impact and representing the university at functions, and tomorrow night, we're going to meet with Hispanic community groups in Atlantic City. Rosa has a counseling background, always helpful when dealing with faculty and staff, so I'd like you to welcome her. We're delighted that she's here.
I would like to take a moment to introduce Diana Strzelczek. She's formerly of Service Learning and has now taken on the role as Assistant Director of Continuing Studies. Please stand up, Diana.
I have one more, and you're going to be standing again. This is Matty's last meeting as Chair, okay? September is when we do the switch, and Leo, if we do go back and think three, three and a half years ago, her strength and leadership helped carry this institution through its darkest hours, and she deserved, and she did it with a great deal of diplomacy, she did it by flying back and forth literally, weekly, between California and here, and she did it because of her love and passion for Stockton. We give her A. To others, and as for those who do not remember, Leo Schofer becomes the Chair in September, and we are looking forward to Leo's leadership. Something, I'm going to preempt something you're going to get tomorrow, but I don't care, so forgive me, Susan. 9/20/18 at 11:00 AM is the ribbon cutting in Atlantic City. September 20th at, at 11:00 AM, 11:00 AM, okay? Not 8, 11, all right. You all know that, I know that, but I just wanted to get it confirmed.
That's great. All right, any comments from the Board of Trustees?
Yes, if I may. As the, as the next Chairperson of this board, I'd just like to say how excited I am about the three-year extension to President Kesselman's contract. Here at Stockton, we all know the tremendous work he has done during his initial years, but I think it's important to note that this extension really sends a message out to the community, that we are united here at Stockton, that we have stable leadership, and that it's not all about the buildings and the growth, but that we are working together as a Stockton community under excellent leadership to take us to the next level that we will be achieving. And I think it's important that, that we recognize that. And again, Matty, thank you, you know, for your tremendous term, really, Matty served a term and a half, because unfortunately, her predecessor died during his term in office, Dean Pappas, and we all remember Dean, and Matty stepped in and filled that void at a very, very important and delicate time in our history, and did an outstanding job, and I'll mention that more at the next meeting, but I wanted to thank you on behalf of all of the Board members for your outstanding service and your commitment to Stockton. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Any other comments from the public? All right. None, hearing none, I get to hit this. Oh, yeah, wait a minute, oh, see, I'm still learning. We got to have a motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
And then in a second, then I don't have to say any questions, comments, or whatever, we just say.
Bye.
Now you can use your gavel. Okay, one more time.
Great job.
Thank you.